Hi, my name is Jane Dowd.
My name is Alex Watson.
My name is Erin Pia.
My name is Taylor Gochet.
You're watching GPS 19. Keep it on.
You are moving up in the world. Alright, good evening. I am going to call. I am going to call the Board of Education meeting to order. It is about 6:04. I've called the meeting to order. With admission statement is teaching and learning and the goals is to provide dynamic, rigorous curriculum, to ensure effective and engaging instruction, and embrace excellent learning environments. At this time...
I'm ready to stand up.
I'm going to take Rita's lead and I'm going to stand up for the Pledge of Legions.
It's right over there.
And Mike, would you be willing to lead us? Mike Whitney, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
But I keep looking over there.
They should be over there, there's more room.
Alright, do we have any...
Okay, my... My understanding is that we do not have visitors or other special guests, so we are going to be moving on to the comments section of our agenda. And this is the comments from citizens, which is the agenda items and other subject of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation shall be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments from citizens portion of the board meeting. And citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. And my understanding from my friend Ms. Joan, that actually, Mike Whitney, you had asked to come speak, so please feel free.
I'm Mike Whitney, 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive, Mystic, Connecticut. I'm also on the RTM. And I'll keep my comments brief and I'll say that I can't stay here the whole meeting. It's not because I'm storming out, it's because I have to get my daughter orchestra. So, I submitted an email to you and you probably have read it, but so this is a much shorter version of that. But I just want to say that my main question, I couldn't tell from my information on the budget yet, is I want to know if the number of teachers and aides supported in this year's budget are at least as numerous as the amount we currently employ this year. And I really hope so because it looks like enrollment is up at least a little bit and I don't think we can raise our district performance without our talented teachers and staff. Secondly, this is more specific to my district. I'm concerned that the Northeast Academy Arts Magnet School class sizes have grown. I see that effects in my children's classes. And at least according to the numbers, I saw they're among the largest in the district for elementary schools. So I'd like to see them smaller, but definitely don't want to see them increase next year. And so I'd like that, those considerations to be thought of when considering this year's budget, but also when opening magnet slots for next year. The magnet program is a wonderful addition to our school. I just want to make sure that the class size still stays reasonable. Finally, I'm encouraged that the State Department of Education allocated the funds to help for the Alliance District Planning and that there's been a good spending plan for that for this year. And I'm hoping that the state will provide at least as much and hopefully more for the same purposes next year. It's an important step in the right direction. I hope more broadly that we can plan together strategically how we're going to grow out of the Alliance School District designation and increase our performance. And I'm not sure the exact venue, the mechanism for that, but perhaps a task force incorporating teachers, Board of Ed, and other members, parents and students, would make sense. So, as a whole though, as we go into this, as we already are in this budget season, I really emphasize that our town should be serious about improving student performance. And I hope we get behind a budget that fully supports our education system. And I thank you all for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else that would like to have a conversation with us?
Hearing none. So the response from Mike, which is the next part of our agenda, is that I love the idea of, in your email, about setting up a task force. And so that was going to be something that I was going to address in my conversation with Dr. Granier tomorrow, about, you know, what, if that was to happen, what would that look like? And, you know, how many bodies and such. My understanding is that the 600,000 that we received was for this year, the '17 and '18. And my understanding is that that was actually a special funding actually out of the state. This is just to make sure I've got all the information correct. So the State Department of Education, but there is no guarantee. In fact, we've been told that we would not be receiving that 600,000 grant before that. Our monies will come in through the educational cost sharing. That will not be impacted. So, yes, as I can see it on your face, yes. So that's sort of what we are faced with as well. And I'm going to ask Dr. Granier to get together with the principal and kind of take a look at the projected enrollment for NEA for next year.
But I can tell you one thing. Last year, because of the closing of Pleasant Valley School, we did add some children to the third, fourth, and fifth grade. That is not the plan this year. We're not going to increase the class sizes. The only openings that we're going to have essentially will be for the kindergarten children. So we're, we are not going to allow class sizes to exceed... Twenty-four, by the way, is the maximum desired class size by the Board, so we're not going to exceed that. So we can talk about that. And in terms of teachers and aides, the only, there are actually only two teachers identified, as I think you knew, in the budget. Both of them for enrollment purposes. So we have currently, I forget what school it is, but we have currently, say, three fourth grade teachers, but we only have, we only have two third grade classes coming in. So it's not so much that we're cutting a teacher just because of enrollment. And you're right, the enrollment, the enrollment drives us a little crazy because it's taken officially on October 1st. Right now, we're 122 up. You know, talk to me next month, we could be 122 down. So we're, you know, we're always, we're always trying to balance that. But we will make sure that sufficient staff is allocated in the budget, I can assure you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I will be moving on, but once again, thank you, Mike. And so now we're at, which has become like my favorite part of the evening, which is the Student Representative Report. And before you start, I just, I was thinking about this on the way over, about, just for the people to know that in the past year, actually with the two of your leadership, you've become an active participant in our committee of the whole meetings that we had. And they have enriched our dialogues. You have actually saved a lot of work for many of us because of your tech savvy, or just you have your, you have your feet to the ground, so you know what's kind of happening in the district. And so I just wanted to, once again, say thank you so much for what you are, how you're helping us as a board to grow. So I wanted to say thank you, but you're on.
Okay. So a couple updates from the last meeting. Our Fitch Jazz Band attended the Berklee Jazz Festival in Boston, and they came out placing third, which was a great accomplishment. And then also last week, all the students had the opportunity to write a little message on hearts that were going to get sent down to Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. So the plan is to have all the hearts hung up, so for the students and faculty members there to read them and see that here, even our little town here in Groton, Connecticut, we're here to support them as well. So with that, we also have some class council updates. The seniors are super busy with a long list. There's this Wednesday, seniors will be holding an Applebee's fundraiser, and that'll be from 11:00 a.m. to close. There's also the Irons Restaurant fundraiser, which is located in Hilton Mystic, which all the students refer to as the hotel next to Starbucks in Mystic, if you know where that is, on Thursday, March 8th. And that will be from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., which is closed. They'll be holding another Applebee's fundraiser on Tuesday, March 13th, as well as a Groton Townhouse fundraiser on Friday, March 16th. That'll run all day long, 24 hours. And then a bake sale and a drawstring bag sale during parent-teacher conferences, which will take place on Thursday, March 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the high school. And then this is one event that I highly recommend to bold it, underline it, star it in your calendar. And it's our annual Mr. Falcon Pageant, which if you don't know, is our annual pageant that is a little bit different and takes a play on a regular beauty pageant, except it's just senior males. So you're going to see them come out, they're going to perform choreographed dances, they're going to show off their talents, and there's even a Q&amp;A portion. So the judges will ask them a question on the spot. They don't know the question beforehand, they'll have to come up to the mic and answer it to the best of their ability. So it's a great night. It's a big fundraiser for the senior class as well this year. Pre-sale tickets are $8 and the outdoor tickets are $10. So to mark in your calendar, it will take place on Friday, March 16th, 2018, and it's at 6:30 p.m. in the high school auditorium. So it's definitely one not to miss. Last year, I had the honor of helping out the class of 2017 with their Mr. Falcon, and I can say it was definitely one of those events that will stick with me forever. I laughed, I laughed the hardest when they were practicing, one of their rehearsals, I remember, they were practicing their Q&amp;A, and some of the males' responses were quite hilarious. So I'm really excited to see the show this year as well. So if you're able to make it, definitely come out Friday, March 16th at 6:30, and it's open to the public as well. So any students, family members, teachers from all across the districts are welcome to attend.
I also second that Mr. Falcon Pageant. It's probably my favorite event of each year. I've helped out, I helped out last year. I will. On Thursday, there will be a mental health summit at Fitch High School from 3:30 to 7:30, and it is open to the public. Also, on March 12th is spring sports night in the auditorium at 6:30. And anybody who is participating in a spring sport is encouraged to attend, and a parent or garden is asked to come with that student athlete. And also, if you are participating as well, the athletic department reminds you to sign up on Family ID. The AP, the social studies department is putting on AP social, is putting on studies, study sessions for students that are taking the AP exams. It is AP Gov, AP US History, and I believe that's it. Ms. Hodge, Ms. Rising, Mr. Higgins, and Mr. Crump will be doing that on March 19th after school. There's a calendar on the Fitch homepage. And also Falcon Academy, starting Wednesday, is going to be doing SAT study sessions in the library after school from 2:15 to 3:15. And that is going to be every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, leading up to the ACTs. And then SATs, as we go into the SATs, SATs day is Wednesday, March 21st, 2018. Freshmen and sophomores will be taking the PSAT, juniors will be taking the SAT, and seniors will be working on their college application process. And it will be an early dismissal day for students. That's it for us.
Any questions? Rita?
I have a few questions. At the Falcon Academy, that takes place, she said Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, who are the instructors?
So it's actually a peer-led tutoring. So we have student tutors from all grades actually that come out and help tutor, but it is supervised by two of our teachers on different days. So it's peer-tutored, but then there's also supervisors in case they have any questions.
And I know there's two National School Walkout Days coming up, March 14th and March 24th. One is for students rising up against gun violence, you know, in the aftermath of the Parkland shooting. And I was wondering and hoping that Fitch High School was going to be partaking in that and was wondering what you were doing with the national, you know, with your group that you host.
Yep, so actually, I have met with Mr. Arquarius just recently, and he is totally in agreement and would love to have, to participate in this national walkout. So we are planning to host a little event on March, Wednesday, March 14th. So it's in the works right now. We're putting together a principal's advisory, so we're able to get student input from all the grades to see specifically what we want to do, see if they're interested in doing the 17 minutes with reading off the names, to do a moment of silence. So that is in the works. The date that we have is Wednesday, March 14th for Fitch.
And I think it's very important that you not only have, you have a place for the students to go that don't want to march out, leave school, because I think it's both that has to be addressed. And then the March 24th, I think, is March for Our Lives, and that's another date that has come up. Because the third one is April 20th, and you'll be on vacation. So I was hoping you'd do one of the March dates. That's great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, we'll move on. Thank you, guys. Next, we are to the superintendent and administration reports. So Dr. Granier?
Just a little bit, I wasn't planning on talking about this, but since we brought up the 14th, actually, I also spoke to Mr. Arquarius in a student group today and the teachers' union. And the teachers, by contract, are not allowed to walk out. So the teachers have approached us about a walk-in, that students voluntarily might congregate some safe place, like perhaps the football field. And there would be some speeches, and there would be some reading of names and perhaps a moment of silence. And in solidarity with the students, the teachers would walk into school. But Mrs. Austin was at a luncheon today and invited Congressman Courtney, who said he would be very happy to come and participate and perhaps have a U.S. House of Representatives member talk about legislation regarding violence. So the students, the idea would be there would be staff members in school attending to the students who chose not to participate in this walk-in or teach-in or whatever we want to call it. And I know it's nationwide, it is certainly regional, the schools involved in the More Than Words program are coordinating, so everything seems to be aiming for us towards the 14th of March, so we're moving forward to that. We're going to reach out to Congressman Courtney's office tomorrow, and that'd be excellent if we could get him. But the other, other things I planned to talk about was I gave out, I gave out the accountability index, and if anyone, I'll send a couple each way, if anyone doesn't have it in their, in their, in their packet. The, I would like to go to the proverbial bottom line. This is the comparison of the 15-16 to the 16-17 index. And so the index, index, as I've said before, it takes in initially the scores for the students, all students and high-need students, meaning those students with free and reduced lunch, who are English language learners or who are special education children. We take in all the literacy scores, all the math scores, and all the science scores for those students. And then we take in the percentage of the targeted growth that our students achieved in literacy, math. And then we talk about chronic absenteeism. And by chronic absenteeism, I mean those students who have missed 10% of the school year. So if a student was with us for 100 days, they are only allowed, before they become chronic, to have 10 days absent. So a full year, of course, would be 18 days. So then we have chronic needs for all students and high-need students, then we have college and career courses, on-track for graduation, four-year graduation, six-year graduation, post-secondary entrance, physical fitness, and arts access. Those are the 12 index measures. And all of that gets reduced to a number, and last year it was reduced to 73.2, and this year it fell to 72.1. Three-quarters of the districts in the state actually, their score went down. But if you look at the scores fairly carefully, if you look at the 15-16, the first score for English language arts went from 67.2 to 68.1, which is probably very close to our targeted growth. For high-need students, we went from 59.4 to 59.2, tiny decline. Math students went from 62.2 to 63.3. High-need students went from 54.5 to 54.8. Science students went from 58.7 to 56.6, so a bit of a decline there. Our high-need science scores went from 52 even to 49.8, so again, some problems there. I won't read all of it, but you could, you could compare all of those things. One of the, one of the interesting things is our chronic absentee rate actually went up, very slightly, but it went up. And our absentee rate for high-need students, i.e. students who missed 10% more of the school year, went from 15.8 to 16.6. Again, the wrong direction. And we are, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow with the principals, and we're trying to, trying to get at that number. And Ms. Austin and I are working with the Alliance Office, although they're not, they're not account, they're not responsible for this. Actually, the Performance Office is responsible for this. To be frank, we still don't know of the 12 measures, how, it's a fairly complex calculation, but I would love to know, if you look at, if you look at the top six items, you see that Groton, if you look at the state average, for our 16-17, we're above the state average in literacy, above the state average significantly for high-needs literacy, above the state average for math, significantly above the state average for high-needs math, above the state average for all students in science, and significantly above the state average for high-needs science. So it's a bit perplexing to me. Obviously, there are other measures, and so I don't want to hang my hat on just those academic measures. I mean, this is, this is sort of, as Mrs. Austin has said in the past, this is a little like the Groton yardstick. It actually measures a lot of things. But what we don't have a great handle on is what is driving us to a score of 72. As Mr. Whitney said, we want to work our way out of this. Working our way out of this means to get to about 70, about 74.5. If we had an index score of 74.5 a few years from now, actually, four years from now, you can't get off during this time. So we're, we will, we will be in Alliance District until 2022, and regardless of what our scores are, and of course, the revenue from the state, the education cost hearing grant will remain constant for, until 2022. But I wish, and we continue to get this clarified, that I knew what the, each of these scores meant. I wish I knew which, because I don't think it's 1/12 each, because we did too well on the academic side to then go down. It doesn't, doesn't exactly make sense to me, but the calculation, I know for a fact, is quite, quite complex. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, although this is going to be on a COW meeting. We're going to go through this in detail.
Rita? I had one. Has it been explained to you yet when they came down from the state? I think we talked about this, about the post-secondary entrance class of 2015, that we're, you know, so far below the state average, and I was, and it seemed like it went down in 2016-17. And I'm wondering, is this just for colleges? Does it include military? I was wondering, what did they say about that?
I don't have a clear answer on that yet. I was very surprised with these numbers. I'm sure it does not include the military, but my understanding is that we have a good, two-thirds of our students go to two- or four-year colleges, and then another 10%, 12% go to training, post-secondary training institutions. So maybe those don't count, but I find it hard to believe that the state is at like 72%. We have, well, I think, you know, at graduation, as I chat with the kids, the vast majority of our students, truly the vast majority are going on to a two-year or a four-year college. But I do think they go through the National Clearinghouse, so these are apparently accurate numbers. What we don't know is who's reporting what to the state. These are clearly not our numbers being reported. So that's another sort of little frustration.
The same with physical fitness, because physical fitness is...
Yes, physical fitness went down. No, we do report that.
Yeah, that correlates with a physical fitness test that's given in fourth grade and eighth grade.
That's right.
And then, again, in high school.
In tenth.
Tenth. So we need to really bring in our physical education teachers and...
We do. Well, in some schools, I can tell you that they have like sort of walking, walking clubs every morning, that sort of thing.
Yes, oh, I know. But I meant in the high school.
Yeah, yeah, in the high school, yeah. Right, right. And we are, we are, as I said, we're working on this absentee, chronic absentee problem, which is a problem. If kids are not in school, they're not learning as well as they should be, that's for sure.
Question?
Do we still do the president's physical fitness test every year?
We do. That, well, it's a state physical fitness test, but yes, that's it.
Okay, so we're still, the kids are still have that little, like, gotta get this.
Yes, right, right.
Building up competition between them and themselves, and the kid behind them beating 114 pull-ups.
That's right.
The next girl, the next year.
That's right.
That was like a really, for my high school at least, it was a really...
Oh, yeah, it's a big question. Well, and of course, we have 92% of the kids, well, we had 94% of the kids participate. So we have good participation, and we had a slightly increased score, but we need to do better.
Alright, any other questions about the Alliance? You're still on?
The next item is, as some of you, I hope everyone knows, there will be a major meeting tomorrow night. There is a public hearing about, to talk about the merit property conversion, meaning when the Groton 2020 Plan was developed, the ultimately, State Department of Environmental Protection, DEEP, it's actually Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, considered 31 properties and ultimately decided on the Boulder Run property as a quote comparable conversion of the restrictions on the merit property, which was partially paid for by Recreation and Open Space Grant, that those restrictions would go on the Boulder Run property, and the merit property would be freed so that we would be able to build a There was a recent challenge, because there was not a public hearing held two years ago, and the town council agreed that holding a public hearing is appropriate. So tomorrow night, there'll be a public hearing, which really will focus on the issue of, should the merit property have its, be converted and the Boulder Run have the... should the merit property have its, be converted, and the Boulder Run have the restrictions. Obviously, it's extremely important. Without the merit property, pretty much, the 2020 Plan would not be able to go forward. We certainly would not have an adjacent school. We would not have the ability to use, as we are currently doing, it's already designed, to use the auditorium at the high school and only a smaller space at the middle school, which saved 20,000 square feet. It's a great efficiency of putting those two schools together. And of course, if the schools weren't together, we would not have high-school teachers be able to come and teach advanced courses at the middle school, or even have some advanced middle-school students take high-school courses. We would not be able to have an on-campus softball field. So there's a lot of elements that have gone into it. And of course, that once the middle school is built, the two schools, one school will be built at the Cutler site, and because of the racial imbalance, the town has received 80% reimbursement for that school. And there will be a school built at the Westside site. And all of that really is contingent upon the merit property. Like I say, I think tomorrow night will be helpful for the public, because I know the town planner is going to make a presentation, which will include the review of these 31 sites.
Gretchen?
Dr. Meehan, I don't know if you've thought about this, and it probably has not even entered your mind, but this will enter the mind of many, many parents and many, many citizens. Groton is divided into two youth leagues, baseball and softball. Mystic Baseball Little League, they have six fields. Two are at Rossi, two are at Williams Beach at YMCA, and two are at Cutler. If we build a building on top of our two baseball fields...
Well, we would knock the building down, and then we'd put the baseball fields back.
Okay. We just need to make sure those baseball fields stay there.
Good question.
Thank you. That's the other thing, that one of the hearts of the Groton 2020 Plan is to build a softball facility and two large other fields, one of which may be synthetic surface, which would really be a field multiplier, plus to have a full high-school gymnasium open for public use, plus a dance studio, plus a full fitness center. So the site would provide an expanded recreation. So I know a lot of recreation people are very interested in this. And of course, those fields would be adjacent to a football field, a lighted football field, a lighted baseball field, and soccer field. So it would really give us a really nice complex at the top of the hill there.
But tomorrow's meeting is about just really understanding the conversion between the merit property and the board of property.
And that's it for me.
All right. Ms. Austin, welcome.
Hello. Just keeping everybody up to date with curriculum and instruction. We have, I have met with the task force, we have a science task force, we have a math task force, and we have an English Language Arts task force that have been meeting on a regular basis. And this past month, we met to look at the priorities with curriculum writing, and then they presented to the Curriculum and Instruction Council what we hope to accomplish. And basically, we need to really look at the curriculum documents that were written. Many of them were written with a program in mind, so we really have to decouple that and just keep it related to the Common Core standards and really look at that. But in addition, I think you saw from the math department, or math task force, that they had created a platform, a kind of pacing guide, as you will, that would put in all of the Common Core standards, and it would be a teaching document that they could use, and it would have everything at their fingertips, common assessments, and different kinds of problems, and contextual problems, and grammar and phonics within the ELA, so that everything would be, like, in one place. So we're looking at doing that kind of work, and we are supported by the Alliance Grant this year. But the Alliance Grant ends at the end of June, and if you know the amount of snow days we've had, it gives us very little time. So Lori Lapine is putting out a posting, and we're going to be looking for teams of teachers in each of those three areas to work on curriculum, and it might just have to happen after school, you know, like, three-hour segments at a time. So we'll get together the people who are really interested in working on that, and we'll find time that we can use, because we definitely want to use those funds. And it's, you know, really enormous work, enormous challenge, but we're really hoping we can get a lot of it accomplished before the end of June.
So businessmen, is that all? Do I have any questions about that? So you are on.
All right, everyone should have a schedule like this. It says FY 2018 Budget Summary at the top, and down in the right-hand corner, a number of 203323. And I think there's extras back in the table, if anybody is looking for this. The main drivers that drive this under budget by 203,000 is coming from salaries, about 521,000, offset by some overages in benefits of 547,000. The other main driver is some anticipated savings in tuition, approximately 487,000. But, you know, as we talked about, that number is subject to change as the bills come in.
And this is sort of what we talked about in our last Committee of the Whole meeting.
Yeah, this is.
So there's nothing new from that?
Nothing new.
Okay. So once again, I don't want people to think that we're not having a discussion about it, but we've had our conversation around in the Committee of the Whole.
And then also, and we looked at this at the last Committee of the Whole as well, the healthcare schedule. And I just want to go over one more time, that the yellow box in the middle of the page, 1,063,006, that's our ANTHOM costs for the month of January. And, you know, just to reiterate, that is over budget for the month. That's what the 110.9 is on the right-hand side. But on a year-to-date basis, we're still tracking below budget, 88.5%. We anticipate still achieving the 11.5 from ANTHOM. I guess the one thing I do want to caution you on is that, you know, we didn't budget OPEB separately last year, so that has the, you know, can have an effect of, we're going to need to fund that. And so in the past, it's been funded by claim savings. And so we're hoping that there's going to be some savings here to offset the OPEB amount, but if not, we have to find another way to take care of that, and that may or may not have to be the reserve.
Could you just, for the public, explain what OPEB is?
OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. These are benefits that are paid to retired folks, health benefits. It's monitored or taken care of by the town, but as far as the bill for the folks that retired from the Board, that's what this represents.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we are going to go to Mr. Kilpatrick. Honest, we'll stay with you. And just for the Board to know is that I asked for us to have a school security update, specifically after, in light of what happened in Florida, that I figured that we would want to know, and then also that our public would like to know about that, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I have two items to report on the Groton 2020 Plan. We continue, the staff continues to meet with SLAM, our architects, on the middle-school project, and provide them with the, any information that they requested, electrical bills, all kinds of things like that. We did meet with the Permanent School Building Committee on the 15th of the month, and at that meeting, the Permanent School Building Committee did determine what we're going to be using for a heating system, for instance, for the school. So they are working on mechanicals. Last week, at the end of last week, we did go down to Clinton to visit the Morgan School. Wes Greenleaf walked us around to, so that we could see the systems that they chose in action. So the group went down there, and was, were guided by Wes Greenleaf down there. The second item is the school security update. I was able to deliver the updated All Hazard Safety and Security Plan to the state just about a week ago, maybe 10 days ago. So that's been delivered. Each year, it's required for us to submit that to the state. Generally speaking, most of the changes in that plan, the plan remains pretty much the same, but the names of teachers and things change in the school, so that's the biggest change on this. In addition to that, the District-Wide Safety and Security Committee meeting just happens to be meeting this Wednesday at 2:00. That was our regularly scheduled, well, actually, our regularly scheduled meeting was on a snow day. So about three weeks ago, we chose this coming Wednesday, so it's landing at a good time for us to be meeting. That committee consists of school staff, principals, teachers, custodians, administrators. Also includes the Police Department, Fire Marshals. So it's a wide range of people from throughout the town that continue to discuss the needs of the district as we move forward with our plans. I know that there have been a lot of questions from the public over the last few days about, with their concerns about what we're doing with regard to safety and security with the new school, with the new middle school. This, I can tell you, the short answer is, don't, really don't like to discuss particulars about what we're doing with security and safety in our buildings. However, the state has very specific guidelines when it comes to safety and security in our buildings now, and they are being followed very closely by the school committee and by the architects. So everybody knows we're going to have lots of cameras and things like that, so those things will continue. And there are some other things that the state requires with regard to building new buildings and increasing security and safety in our buildings.
Gretchen?
In regards to the school safety, they had a security officer, some kind of officer, I'm not sure exactly what he was, and he sat there for four minutes. He got there in two minutes, and it took four minutes to get inside. That was six minutes. The event was over at nine. How will our, will our response be faster than that?
I think that that's a hypothetical question, and really, what we were looking for safety updates, and I think that that would, that'd be a question that you could ask, actually, the police chief or Dr. ...
Or I could go to that meeting, which, is that what time and where?
We can talk tomorrow. I can tell you the answer.
Thank you.
Mike, it's just, you know...
I hear you. I just think it's a very sensitive issue, and I appreciate your question. Any other question for Mr. Kilpatrick? Awesome, thank you, Sandra. Moving on to committee reports, and I do know, Rita, you have LEARN.
Yes, I do. We had a couple of meetings since we last met, and one was with, we knew this, let's see, the new principal from Ledger, new superintendent, his name is Jay Hartling?
Yes.
Who you've met, obviously.
Yes.
Yes, he gave a wonderful presentation about his vision, you know, for the Ledger Public Schools. But one thing that he mentioned that I thought really sounded great was, they revamped their elementary school day, and they have an intervention block. And I know we have something like that at our middle school, and I thought, gee, wouldn't that be great to have that in our elementary school also? So I was wondering if we could ever think about getting together some staff and looking at redoing that, especially now that we're in Alliance District, having time to for intervention?
I can address that.
Oh, great.
Since, really statewide, we were really mandated to have a response to intervention or an SRBI for the state of Connecticut, Groton Public Schools in each of our, you know, in our elementary, middle school, and high school, does have allocated time for intervention. It's not, we don't have a common schedule between all six elementaries, but they absolutely have the staffing for intervention that's really based on enrollment, but equitable. Now, we actually have tutors, a math tutor in each of the buildings, but those people do serve as children in this additional timeframe. We've either extended our literacy block and added the half hour to the block and had all of our resources come in, or we've designated an additional half hour at some point during the day. So we have that already.
So we have an hour? Because this was an hour of intervention.
Well, we've extended our core, so it's really important that you work on your core curriculum and make sure, that's why with Teachers College, Columbia University, we have kids reading more, and we have, you know, the instruction, and then you get the additional guided reading, or the additional whatever the child needs, you know, in that. So we do have probably, I wouldn't know what Ledger has, but we do have an extended block that's basically two hours of literacy every day, so.
Okay. But not just literacy, math also.
Well, and math is a full hour, and then the additional half hour if they need that.
Okay.
So once we went down markedly, is it science?
Wait, wait, wait. I'm just talking about LEARN, about the report from the superintendent.
Yep, no, we're on committee reports now. We're on the committee.
I'm sorry, my bad.
The other thing is that the rest directors, they've changed the way people are fingerprinted now. They want each district to have fingerprinting. Where before, you could go to LEARN and a whole area. So now, a substitute, if they want to be a substitute in, let's say, East Lime, they have to go to East Lime and be fingerprinted. In Groton, you'd have to be fingerprinted. And it's something new, the state has just changed, and the rest directors are trying to get together, because for each one, it's like $100.
Yeah, it's expensive.
And I think it's important that the state realize what a burden it is for towns. And especially, you know, we have a lot, this is for any volunteer that walks into the school, no matter who it is, has to be fingerprinted, where before, you could go to, and it was a nominal cost.
It's like $25.
Yeah, about $25, $35, and now it's $100. And if you go to multiple places, it's multiple fingerprinting.
Yes, it's a pandemic.
So I'm hoping that the state, enough people respond and contact the state so that they realize that this is not a good thing.
Right, yeah, we'll push it.
Is there a contact point that we can make our feelings known?
I believe if you, you know, with the state, it would be anybody, let's say, our state legislators.
Representative Conley or De La Cruz.
Yeah, either one would be great.
Yeah, Lori has some.
Lori has something to just have a minute.
So Rita, your points are correct, and the appropriate course of action would be to talk to the legislatures. This is legislation that was written in, so unfortunately, we're all bound by it, but certainly, if we can get the legislators to get some movement on it, they might be able to revise the regulations so that we can start to share information again, which is what's preventing us from doing that with the subs, like you had talked about.
Right, that's the issue. You can't share from one district to another. Thank you.
So if you want to do four different school systems, you have to have $400.
$400 if you...
So Gretchen, did scholarship or the Trails Committee?
I've not met with Trails Committee. Scholarship had a very brief meeting, to which I was working.
Okay.
I didn't make.
They have an upcoming. I think that they have, they have an upcoming, it's what, the third Wednesday or the third Thursday?
The third, they generally meet the third Thursday, it is not 5:15, it is 5:00. They're usually done by 5:15, so if you show up at 5:15, you missed it.
Okay.
I just didn't get, I had to work that night, so that was last Thursday.
Any other committee reports? All right, so we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda, which is that all matters listed under the Consent Agenda will be considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, but we will allow points of clarification, will be allowed. And so I will actually ask for an approval, actually, a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to accept the consent.
That'd be Rosemary, can I have a second?
Second.
That would be Lee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the acceptance of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the motion has so carried. The Board of Ed would like to thank very much the Groton Ilks, who made a donation for $600 to the Food Service Department, and that also, a big thanks to Bethany Traverso... that also, a big thanks to Bethany Traverso, who has made a donation of $150 to the Fitch High School fencing team. I almost said $150,000, which would have been a really exciting move. But that's not what it was. Very generous. So we're now on to the old business part. And Jay, would you please read number one?
We approve the second reading policy, P 2151, recruitment and selection of certified and non-certified employees.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Rosemary. All right. So it's been in our pocket. Do we have any more comments? Or Gretchen?
When we say minority, I think that term has changed a great deal throughout this recent policies we have done. When we say minority, what are we talking? Are we talking about people of gender difference? Or are we talking how much melanin you have in your skin?
Is that just, is that just state?
I just want to know what we're discussing when we say minority.
When you talk about minority, it's recognized both in ethnicity and gender. So it's actually both.
And that is, is that a federal reg?
It's a federal regulatory.
So for an elementary school, a male would be a minority? Because there are very few elementary teachers who are guys.
My guess is that's not true, that it's a federal regulation, and our policies and procedures have to kind of follow the language that's set up by the state regulation and federal regulation. So my sense is, is that the minority student is, we are using by the definition by the federal regulations.
Yes, we use the federal categories, so to speak, that define what's considered a minority. Correct.
We need to be very specific at this juncture of our.
I think we can only go by what the federal regulations have stated for us. Because that is the, that is the letter, that's the law, the land.
By the law.
That's the land of the law that we still go on.
The discussions we've had earlier on gender.
Yep. No, I appreciate that.
That we are also keeping in mind that may be a minority.
I believe I understand here.
Gender equity in mind, that's for sure.
Yes. Thank you. Any other further conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve a second reading policy, P 2151, recruitment and selection of certified and non-certified employees, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. We have one. Oppose, abstain. Motion so carried. Rosemary, would you be willing to read number two?
I'd be delighted.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action regarding approval as a second reading of policy, P 4111, recruitment and selection, which is enclosed. And I make a motion to approve the second reading.
Okay. So can I have a second?
Second.
That would be come from Lee. And I'll entertain discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the second, the second reading of policy, 4111, recruitment and selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. One opposition, I can't say the word.
Oppose.
Abstain. Motion so carried. Lee, did you abstain?
No.
Oh, okay. I just saw you raise your hand.
No, I've never been.
Okay. And Lee, would you be willing to read the motion for number three?
I will. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of a second reading of policy, P 4112.51, employment verification and offer.
Can I please have a second?
I second.
That would be Rosemary. And discussion.
I have a question of clarification on at least two, maybe three of the sections. And one is on the first page. It's under three, section three, C. And I find.
It's hard to understand you.
I can't actually. Really? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Better. All right. Let me say that again. There are at least three places where I've found things that I just didn't understand. One is on the first page, number three, section three, C. I can't make out what this means, so maybe you can help me. Or maybe we can send this back for a second for looking at it again. C says, has never had a professional occupational license or certificate, suspended or revoked, or has ever surrendered one while an allegation of abuse or neglect was pending under investigation by DCF, or an investigation of sexual misconduct was pending under investigation, or because an allegation substantiated by DCF of abuse or neglect, of sexual misconduct, or conviction for abuse of neglect or sexual misconduct. I have no idea what that means. So maybe we can send it back.
Lori?
Yeah. So what they're defining here is, there are several situations in which a person may have their license suspended or revoked. So they're defining the specific situation. So it's saying, you're pending under investigation by DCF. There's an investigation of sexual misconduct, or because an allegation substantiated by DCF. So it's going from a pending allegation to substantiated, which means an investigation was conducted. And now they're saying that the complaint was substantiated. So that's the last part of that section that talks about substantiated by DCF of abuse or neglect, or misconduct. And then the last part is, or if there's a conviction of such, which obviously would be a criminal proceeding.
How did you get that out of this?
You have to be familiar with the new regulations, which define all of these situations. So this tries to consolidate a little bit. The regulations are quite lengthy. So it's trying to summarize those points in the section.
Okay.
And one of the issues, unfortunately, in years past, there have been teachers who have been hired after having already been convicted of sexual misconduct, for example. So this is the law getting at that, that those people, the question is, has that ever happened, or have you even been under investigation? Because sometimes people who are resigned pending the investigation, and then they get hired again because they weren't quote-quote convicted. So I think that's the intent.
So everybody's uncomfortable that everybody will understand that when it's written, because I'm sure.
Well, they have to provide a written statement. It's conceivable that they could be under investigation, and then provide a written statement saying, yes, I was under investigation, but here's what happened. It doesn't mean that, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've been to several meetings. We meet with other school districts. We meet with the state to talk about these specific regulations. So to answer your question, I feel like people are pretty well informed on what this means. We're actually exchanging this information among school districts, amongst universities. So those state agencies are pretty well versed in all those scenarios, and when they're supposed to provide that information to us. And we've been doing it since July. It's going, you know, pretty well at this point.
Again, I have another.
Yep.
And that's on the second page. It's employee, employment verification and offer. And it's, if you can explain this, I'll be happy. So it's the very first one. Prior to offering employment to an applicant, the district shall make a documented good faith effort to contact each current and any former employer, no less than three references, or all, if the board counsel, which caused the applicant to have contact with children in order to obtain information and recommendations, which may be relevant to the applicant's fitness for employment, provided such effort, shall not be construed to require more than three telephone requests made on three separate days. Does that mean that if I try calling three times and I don't get an answer, I don't have to do this?
There is a provision in the statute that says if you make good faith attempt to get this information, and businesses don't respond to your phone calls, then you have to try on three separate occasions, on three separate days, before you can move on to somebody else or something else. So it's telling you, you have to make three attempts to reach these individuals. I mean, at the end of the day, sometimes organizations don't return our call. And I wouldn't say that happens within the school communities. But sometimes that happens with private employers that aren't responsive. So it's saying, before you can move on to someone else or get another reference, you've got to make these three attempts on three separate days. You can't just say, they didn't call me back. You have to keep trying, is what that's saying.
I understand that part. But can I say, oh, well, I didn't get an answer. So I like them anyway. And I'm going to hire this serial killer. By the way, because I didn't get an answer back.
Yeah. No, it's a good question. What we do in those situations, we actually go back to the applicant and say, we're having difficulty reaching your reference. Give us someone else to talk to. Let's talk to one of your other supervisors, employers, someone who can speak about your performance. So we actually go back to the applicant and ask them to give us other references who might be more responsive to our calls.
I guess the bottom line is, if you don't ever speak to an employer, a former employer or a reference, whatever, that you move to the next one. You don't hire them anyway. But that's not clear. That's not clear in this at all.
Yeah.
So I think that that might kind of be that. See if there's anything else.
Well, we don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we literally couldn't find a reference, I think that would influence our hiring decisions.
Oh, for sure.
But in this case, we have to make these good faith efforts. But as I was saying, it doesn't happen very often, nor do we have to hire the person. So in other words, when someone of perhaps questionable background applies, if we can't get clearance from the references, we just move on to another applicant.
Okay.
Just let me hammer this one more time.
Please.
What if this person doesn't appear to be of questionable background? What if this person appears just fine, but we still can't find anybody to speak for them?
I mean, it rarely comes up. We usually do get some other form of reference. Like I said, we go back to the person and press them. If they really want the job, they really do make an effort to help us track the person down. A lot of times, we found a person's on vacation. They just, they didn't mean to just not call us.
We'll get an email.
You know, we'll get some type of communication.
I can tell right now.
Yeah.
We also, that's just on one reference. We ask IP for three references, don't we?
That's right.
So it would be unlikely.
Yeah.
And if you can't get anybody to answer to three references, three days, then it may be that they don't want to answer. And maybe we should.
That tells you something.
Right, exactly.
That might be a clue.
I get on that, but that's not what this is.
Yeah. And the statute, just so you know, the statute's defining the three calls on the three days. We did build it in because it's actually written into the statute. They're trying to define for, for individuals, what does good faith effort look like? It doesn't mean that we do it that way all the time, but it's meant to be there. It's written into the statute. It's meant to be there for clarification purposes. If someone says, how many attempts do I need to make before I move on maybe to another reference, or move on with the decision, you know, maybe to go without, without them.
Okay. Any more on this policy?
Is there one more? I'm not sure. Let me look.
All right. Anyone else in discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the second reading of the policy, P 4112-51, employment verification and offer, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. And we have one abstain. So that passes.
Can I just make one clarification? We still have to have the minimum number of references.
Yes.
So that's in the policy.
Right. So Rita, would you be willing to read number four?
To a motion to approve as a second reading policy, P 5114, suspension expulsion due process.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Very heavy on the side. So any discussion?
I have.
Yeah?
I'm not even, they're not numbered, so I don't know what page it is. But it's.
What's the first word on there?
It's section five, expulsion M of students. And it's number.
Section five?
So F is at the top?
Page.
Letter F is at the top?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Letter F is at the top?
Oh.
Where's that section five?
Yes. And it's on the next page.
The next page.
Section.
Okay, so number four.
No, I'm sorry, it's section four. Yeah.
The system.
And it's just a.
Number four, right? Is that the top?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is just a clarification. Three members of the Board of Education shall constitute a quorum for an expulsion hearing. A student may be expelled and so on and so forth. But I thought that we got rid of that three member.
We, well, the board has a choice between a hearing officer, or it could have a three-member quorum board. It's really the board's choice.
I'll see that.
So just to orient you, remember, this document was revised several times by several people. So anything in black was our original. Anything red outlined was what we got rid of. Anything in blue is what the lawyers added to it, based on the law.
How can the lawyers decide whether or not we're going to have three board members?
Well, I think that's probably what the standard is. We could put in, or, you know, to have a hearing officer.
Because this is what we're going to do.
Right.
We should have a hearing officer, because that's what we do as a board.
Right.
That's right?
Yep, we can do that.
So it should be added.
This one was the one where people were concerned about the two and a half inch knife. So I rechecked with Floyd, and that is the letter of the law. That's for the pocket knife. That's just the way it's defined under that two and a half. So, you know, that's just the legal definition.
So do we, do we want to put three members of the Board of Education shall constitute a quorum for expulsion hearing, or a hearing officer?
I think we'd want to keep both, just in case you, you know.
I think it should read that way, then, that be the.
I will. I'll make sure that we do that. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
So does this go back then?
No, I think that, I think we could accept it with that, with that addition.
Excuse me. If you turn the next page, which has K at the top, the red, what came out was Board of Education or a subcommittee of the board, which constitutes three or more members as required, or an impartial hearing board of one or more. But that's the hearing officer.
Okay.
That's what you want to capture.
So we crossed it out when it should be back in.
That's right.
When Floyd put this in, that came out. So we'll put it back in.
We could just put that particular provision in. Yeah.
I have one more question.
Yeah?
And that's about the two and a half inch knife. Because it's a law, I realize that. But do we have to, let me rephrase this and not say, do we have to abide by the law? But do we, can we strengthen our position and say, no knives, no matter two and a half inches or not? Or do we have to have this in there?
I think we do know that. We've talked about that, too.
Well, a plastic knife, if with the wrong intent, could be considered.
A pencil.
Or a pencil, could be considered, you know, dangerous.
I think that it's a bit of a moving target, because the legislature defines a deadly weapon. That's where this comes from. And if it is a deadly weapon, it is a mandatory expulsion. It's not, the board does not have discretion about that. The zero tolerance on knives, I can tell you through hard experience, was, is, can be very painful. Because a fourth grader has a mother.
We had that conversation.
Who sends him in with an Apple Perry knife, and he goes to the teacher. My mom sent me this knife, and the kid is expelled. I've actually seen that.
Yeah.
So we don't want that. We have a sort of common sense. Kids bring a dangerous weapon to school, we go after them. Kids find that they were at a Boy Scout camping trip over the weekend, and it's like, oh, my God, I left my pocket knife. They give it in right away, then we have the parent come and pick up the knife.
And we confiscate it. The parent comes and gets it, and they realize.
My five.
Okay, Gretchen?
Okay. I just want to make sure that we understand that students who put something in a teacher's drink, or food, is here. This is a long time ago. But there was an incident in New York where a teacher was drugged because their coffee cup was on the desk, and somebody dropped stuff in. So we need to address that somewhere in here. I think it is, it may be somehow, but I can't seem to find it.
I don't think it might be.
And the other thing we need to be aware of is an 11-year-old with a baseball bat can hit a person at 60 miles per hour.
Right. Well, all of those are dangerous instruments. You're right. I mean, a baseball bat could be, when used.
A chair.
Yeah, sure.
And your stick. I've been there, done that. And I just want to make sure that we cover all our bases on this.
So you'll notice under administrative, we. So, so you'll notice under administrative required, any willful physical assault was only a serious injury on school grounds. You know, I, I would, I would say a physical assault, if you put poison in somebody's cup, that is a physical assault.
Yeah.
So, I think it gets covered.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that these, you know, I have had a chair thrown at me.
So, any, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing, okay, thank you. So, hearing none?
Oh, I forgot one more thing. This is a moving target, considering we're in Alliance District, and we need to figure out ways to decrease our suspensions, in-school suspensions and expulsions. So, we may need to...
What, I can...
You're not, you're not wrong on that?
Terms of how we are going to deal with these things in the future, not that we want to take away our ability to discipline children.
Right.
We just, I think that it should be rethought.
But probably our policies and procedures won't change, but maybe sort of how we need to do that.
I would really like it to go back and be rethought a little bit.
Okay, I mean, you can, you are more than welcome to vote down the second reading. That's fine.
I'd just like it to be rethought.
Okay. Or, you can make a referral.
I can make a referral.
All right. So, for all those in favor to approve a sec...
May I understand, are you not deleting that one particular...
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. My amendment, well, the motion should be to approve it as amended.
And the amend...
I have to have an amendment.
Right, right, and so the amendment is to add, um...
Not, to replace.
Yeah, yeah, to, to not delete.
This.
It's, it's under six, or the impartial hearing board? Is that one?
Yes.
Yes. To reinstate the previously deleted portion, which is the...
Regarding the impartial hearing officer. And I'll give you the words tomorrow.
Oh, it's under two. So, I just made, I just made...
It's under N. There you go.
I just made the motion with the amendment. I need a second.
Second.
Take your pick. There's at least four or five.
Thank you.
Any further discussion about the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the policy as amended, and the policy is P five one one four, suspension slash expulsion, due process, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
I'll abstain.
You're going to abstain? Oppose?
I like the difficulty.
All right, so, we're moving on. We're moving on to the new business. And Jane, would you like to read underneath new business?
If I can find that, yes.
Welcome to my world.
What's here?
Katrina, do you have that?
It was a handy.
I'm looking for it.
All right.
Okay, what number was it?
It's, uh, under new business.
C one.
Number one.
Okay. I make a motion to approve an eighth grade field trip to Costa Rica, April thirteenth to twenty-one, twenty nineteen.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I've got Jane for a second.
Second.
Oh, no, that was Andrea, sorry, I'm lying. All right, and so I believe our discussion is that we are actually going to have...
Ms. Whitten is here to enlighten us about a proposed trip that she intends to lead to Costa Rica, not this April vacation, but a whole year in advance, April vacation.
On a lighter note, thank you for hearing my fourth presentation regarding leading an educational international field trip for eighth graders in our district. The first three trips will have been to Central America, Southern Europe, and Quebec, Canada. Mark Russell, who is back there here tonight, he is going to be one of the three chaperones for the Quebec trip this April, and we feel that the twenty-four eighth graders from Cutler have been well-prepared for the latest trip. Unfortunately, no students registered from West Side during this school year, but hopefully West Side's students will participate in two thousand and nineteen. Inside the carved Costa Rican bowl, that I believe is making its way around.
Yes.
Good? Okay. There are some sweet treats from Costa Rica for each board member. This is not a bribe, just a cultural element to share. Inside each chocolate candy will be a Costa Rican product, pineapple, orange, coffee, coconut. And there are some lava rocks in the corner of the table over there, harvested from the trip back in two thousand and sixteen. And handouts are going around right now about the two thousand and nineteen destination. Since students pass through middle school every three years, our principal at Cutler, Peter Bass, and I have been talking a lot about what to do for the fourth year. And we believe that revisiting a successful destination has made sense, especially since I was able to get a price break that's about thirty percent lower than it was in two thousand and sixteen. And as most of you know, I've lived and worked in Mexico, Costa Rica, Colombia, and Peru, so I've traveled to many countries in Europe and Eastern Europe. So, I teach with a global perspective, use authentic materials for students to touch and taste, and relate personally true stories and experiences. That's what I want for the students of Groton also, and the earlier, the better. My current Spanish one students, while they're studying Costa Rica and its language and culture, have also learned how to imitate a howler monkey, how to carve a pineapple without having a sharp knife in the classroom, and how Del Monte manages its pineapple fields for its international export markets. This is what happens from experiences. And there is, believe me, I believe, no education as wonderful as travel, and experiencing the totality of another culture. So, I'm excited to propose traveling to Costa Rica in April of two thousand and nineteen with eighth graders from both middle schools. Again, it would be promoted for both middle schools, so that they too can speak and write about another part of our planet Earth and its language and culture. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. One of the handouts is directly from Explorica. It's about the price being, including every single bit that would be, including the tips and everything, for two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for this period of several days over a week. You can see the map on the back. It's a very similar route to the one that was followed three years ago. The other handout basically chronicles the middle school international field trip experiences to date. So, I would love to be able to take them back to Costa Rica, new kids. Any questions?
Questions on the board?
It was three years ago. I thought it was two years ago.
Yeah, this, the third trip is going to be in about fifty days from now, up to Quebec. And then, the fourth trip would be in two thousand and fourteen. Yes, the first one was in two thousand and sixteen.
It's less expensive this year than last time. It's less expensive this year than last time.
Exactly. It's, it's down by several hundred dollars. Explorica was incorporated into another five-star kind of World Strides organization. It's sort of like their younger sister. I'll get some handy, hand-me-downs, maybe that's it. But, it's still, if not a five-star, a three-star, a four-star kind of experience, it's very good, nothing schleppy about it. It's experiential, though, absolutely. Kids, we found for the last, for that Costa Rican trip, they were exhausted at the end of the day, very glad to flop in the beds, that's a good thing, get up the next day for their fresh fruits and, you know, all the wonderful experience that we had, both in the Highlands and the coast.
I, my question is just about sort of like fundraising, and, and what's the, and how do we plan to do that, that even though it is much less than the one in the previous year, it's still quite a bit of money, and so...
It'd be about double this year's experience. It's down from about three thousand for the second-year experience. It's, what we did the first year, we'll do again, I think, what you're sampling actually is from Brit, B R I T T, a very good brand of chocolate and other kinds of produce in Costa Rica. So, we would partly, partner with them again, we made about a thousand dollars to help toward expenses last time, and that was when we were newbies at this. So, I think we could do more than one fundraiser through Cafe Brit, and maybe some other sort of experiential things, as well as selling products. Yes, hi Rita.
I, I don't understand the chaperone ratio. Seven travelers per free chaperone. What does that mean?
For, every time there are seven students, one chaperone is able to go without having to pay.
Well, to me, it's as if the adults could pay for this, why can't it be reversed? You know, like, so that a student could go for free. I realize you have at the bottom two, but, I mean, it's, the adults could, could pay for this trip. Most children, I mean, this is still very expensive, and I can understand how it would be a hardship.
Unless...
Unless what?
Unless maybe one of the chaperones couldn't have afforded it.
It's also, I, just Rita, just kind of off the record, those of us who go, we do chip in for certain things to, to enable the kids to go along with, you know, not just little goody bags, although that's paid for us by two, but we've chipped in for other expenses.
Gretchen?
Young, excited teachers probably cannot afford this. A first-year teacher, a second-year teacher, or a returning teacher doesn't have the funds to do this, but would love to be with the kids, and I'm sure they pay a good portion of stuff out of their own pocket anyway, if I, no teachers think it goes that way.
Rita, I just want to say, the educational travel companies I've contacted, and I've contacted several each time, they all have student chaperone ratios. It can be ten to one, seven to one, five to one, depending on the pricing. With going to a tropical area where you have to have vigilance, and make sure everybody's being well-cared-for, nobody's going to step on a viper, or put, you know, they're, put the shoe on and have a scorpion in the toe, we want to make sure that we have a good student-to-faculty ratio.
Yes.
The parents who go along, they do pay full freight.
The parents who go along do pay?
Yes.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
That's different than chaperone. It's different than the chaperones, the parents aren't considered...
The chaperone ratio is for students, students-to-faculty ratio, the parents are not, they, they pay full freight. Well, the students have the, and they, they're included in the, in the, in the calculation for the, the ratio. I guess, as you say, seven travelers rather to one, yes.
Any other questions? Jane?
Just a concern, I'm sure you've considered this, but what came to mind was an enormous lawsuit that a private school in Connecticut just dealt with this past year, with, after a trip to China, just the importance of inoculations, making sure everything medically is taken care of before you go. In that case, the private school is held responsible. When, when a child became permanently ill, her life has been altered totally.
Because she was not inoculated against something that happened?
Just that the school, the school sent these kids, approved of their trip, therefore the school was deemed responsible for taking, for this enormous lawsuit.
Well, just a heads up.
Want to get bitten by a spider or...
No. Derek?
We have medical forms that the kids have filled out each of the three years now, including, in fact, before the March meeting, kids going up to Quebec are going to be filling them out. If there's anybody that has to self-medicate, we know about that, and I, you know, pen and that, that sort of thing. We go through all that medical information with each child, so that's well-covered. And there's, there's a med, international medical form, I can't remember the exact title on the top, I know it's in my stack, that we go for. We also, actually, Dr. Grainer and the principal at West Side, as well as the principal at Cutler, developed a responsibilities form now, which we circulated, the children have all signed off on in terms of, you know, responsible behavior and, and that sort of thing on the trip, and, and we could share that with you if it would help you.
Gretchen?
Do we have a on-staff, like, the, the school board has a doctor that would be able to look at all the children going, and look at their health forms, and go, oh, this one's missing this vaccine that's needed for that country?
Our school nurse at Cutler, I can't speak for West Side, I don't teach there, but at Cutler, our school nurse looks at each prospective student going, and knows the records, and is thoroughly familiar with each student, and there's one particular student, two particular students we're talking about right now, even though it's just going to be a charter bus road trip up to Quebec. But, you know, the individual issues we do look at in council with the parents. I don't know if there's any kind of a disclaimer statement that's ever been given for parents to sign about their students, I don't, not familiar with one.
Well, different countries have different vaccines, we don't, you know.
You investigate that before going, yes.
So, we just need to make sure that our kids are vaccinated appropriately.
Yes, yes, the answer would be yes to that. Any other questions, Rita?
Yes, so, when, when you look at the map and the flights, is the travel in the country by bus?
Yes. Yes, once, and land in San Jose, in Alajuela, which is the International Airport, and from there, we have a consistent bus throughout the trip, going north to the volcano areas, and then down to the coast, and cloud forest, and all of that.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it's a lot of traveling, and I'm not sure, just by this little tiny map, what it involves.
Well, it's, the country's only the size of West Virginia or so.
Okay.
So, if that, things...
That helps, yeah.
It's not the size of the United States.
So, it's not like you're going through Texas.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good to know.
But, we're not going through Rhode Island either.
All right, any other discussion? All right, and all those in favor of the motion, which is to approve the eighth-grade field trip to Costa Rica, April thirteenth to the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Abstain? The motion so carries. Muchisimas gracias. And thank you for the...
Gracias.
That's all I, I can do. All right, so, the next motion that is on the floor is, and Jane, are you there?
Sure, I'm here, yeah.
Could you, could you read that?
I'm back.
You're back?
To approve the healthy food certification statement for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and vote yes to allow food exemptions.
So, to keep the film running.
Wait, 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 I got to get a second.
Let me back up.
Wait, wait, let's do one thing. Your bowl is right here to the, to the...
My right of the dice.
Jane, thank you for reading.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Rita has made a second. Can you now provide us with the discussion?
Absolutely. Good nee, good evening, everyone, and thank you for listening. This is my colleague, Kate Cerio. My name is Erin Piscata. We're both teachers at Fitch High School, Spanish, and I'm French, so, bonsoir tout le monde. So, we're really excited to talk to you about our trip that we're leading, and I had the wonderful privilege to travel with Kristen last spring to Europe, so this would be my second trip with Groton Public Schools, and Kate's first. So, we are looking to ask for blessing on our trip to France and Spain for April of two thousand and nineteen. So, we've kind of planned ahead and so forth. You do have the itinerary, I emailed it to you last month, there's a Board of Ed packet, there's a PowerPoint, so if you would like me to kind of go over it with you, I'd be happy to do that, or answer any questions.
Do people have any questions? Because, did everyone get, received their, their stuff? Do people have any comments about that? Rita?
My only concern is that Barcelona, there is some turmoil, and would this, could this trip be altered in any way if the, if there are still like some riots that are going on, and if it changes over the course of the next year?
Right, so, with that being said, last year, when I was in Barcelona, I was right there where there was some little bit of awfulness. We can definitely amend the trip if we need to do that. This trip is through Explorica. They're absolutely wonderful, so that's why we've selected them, and they're very cost-effective. So we are, we are open-minded.
That's wonderful. I was in Barcelona also in June, and it's great. And I love your trip to Normandy, which I think is so important.
Yes, I'm a history person, so we needed to get that in there as well.
Thank you.
I knew you were going to say that.
Yes, I know.
Any other, any other questions? So, I'm assuming you guys have like a plan in terms of fundraising for kiddos that cannot come up with a full fare?
We do, we have some ideas. And just like Kristen's trip, our trip does include some complimentary chaperones, if you will. We have to be careful with fundraising because I can't go, as much as I would like to go to Mystic Village Cinema and ask them to do a movie night for the trip, we really can't because it's an equity issue. It's not involving, you know, the senior class of Fitch. It's involving a small group of students. We need 20 students to travel, so it's really not fair to ask the cinema, for example, to do that. I don't think it's fair to ask restaurants either to do that because, once again, it's a select group of students. French and Spanish students, maybe we'll get some Latin students as well, or students that haven't taken a language. So the trip, we're open to that. There is no language requirement to be on the trip. What we're thinking about perhaps are some, you know, gift wrap fundraisers, some cookie dough fundraisers, a car wash, we can do a few of those. Those are a lot of fun. Because you have to be careful asking, you know, for money when it's kind of limited to 20 students. So those are our ideas so far.
Any other discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Fitch High School field trip to Spain and France, April 12th to the 21st in 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstain, motion has carried.
Merci.
Yay. All right, we are now moving on to, and Gretchen, do you have, can you read number, the motion for number three, please? And Mr. Ernie, if you would like to...
Mr. Koschmider, if you would approach the jury.
Nope. New business?
Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the healthy food certification statement 2018-2019, see the enclosure, which I had a moment ago.
So can you please read the motion, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. To approve the healthy food certification statement 2018-2019, vote yes to allow food exemptions.
That's an interesting motion.
Yeah, well...
Can I have a, can I have a second, just so that we can go into discussion?
Second?
That's Rosemary. You're part of our discussion.
Okay.
Hi, Guy.
Hi, folks, how are you? For those of you that know, I'm Ernie Koschmider, the Food Service Director. And again, this is our annual review of the healthy food certification, and we do this yearly. And what this is, does is, you know, for those of you that may not know, but we are a Healthy School Challenge Bronze Recipient. So we get national recognition for that, and it's because of the great policies that this board puts in place to make sure that our students are receiving the freshest, you know, made-on-site foods, our big farm-to-school programming, et cetera. So this piece rolls right in with it. By keeping, you know, by you folks certifying that, yes, this is something that we want to continue doing, it just means that we're keeping out a lot of the artificial ingredient foods that could be coming in. We use very little processed foods, if you will. We meet and exceed the state of Connecticut's healthy nutrition meal patterns. And, you know, I do feel it's important to keep the exemptions in place. What does that mean? When you have a football game, a soccer game, or something that happens after the normal school hours, we want to be able to allow those fundraising projects to take place. That is exactly what the two folks, the traveling clubs here, want to do. This allows them to do that. So, you know, that's what we're asking for your vote on that.
Excuse me, Ernie, with the healthy food certificate, is there a financial incentive for the meals, and could you explain that to the board?
Absolutely. So because we're certifying that, yes, we want to follow the stringent guidelines nutritional, nutritionally, what it does is it gives me, the Food Service Department, an extra 10 cents for every meal that we serve, every complete lunch that we serve. That enables us to reduce our costs with our farm-to-school produce and stuff. That's a little bit more expensive than used and frozen or canned. Of course, you know, we don't use any canned vegetables at all in any of our kitchens. It's always frozen or fresh. And it's a pretty good split. Right now, we're using a lot of frozen due to the, you know, weather and stuff. But obviously, once spring kicks in, we'll start, we'll start bringing stuff up again.
And you freeze some of your own.
We do a lot of our own processing during the summer. We utilize, we partner with Norwich Public Schools, and we actually process our own green beans, corn on the cob, beets, corn, butternut squash. And now's the time that we're retrieving it and starting to, and it's still on our menus, you know, and I think that's important for the families of Groton to notice that, that we're still using locally sourced produce. So that's another great thing.
Gretchen?
I've seen the sign at Whittle's that says partnering with Fitch. Does that still exist?
It does, yes. Again, Gretchen, we use 360 or 365 cases of Mac apples alone this year. That field, as you're coming up Flanders Road, just past Central Office, on the right-hand side is where we usually have our, our big banner there. That's actually our corn. That's grown and it's harvested and taken to Norwich for processing, cryovac, and we bring it back. We also got from Rick Whittle this year, tons of green beans, beautiful tomatoes when they're in that we're able to use for our summer meals program. Unfortunately, those beautiful tomatoes and stuff, when they come in, is during the summer when my schools are out, but when our summer feeding program is in. So that's when we utilize things like that.
You can't get better, apples are corn.
Any other discussion?
We need, we need the minutes of this, that's, thanks for coming, Ernie. This is an important vote for us, so that we can get that financial incentive and keep the healthy meals going and still be able to sell snacks at football and basketball games and that sort of thing, concession stand.
Hearing no other discussion, the motion is to approve the...
I just have a question of the way it's worded.
Yes.
It's a little confusing. And, I mean, even if it said the second part of it, and a vote of yes to allow food exemption. I mean, do you find that, Andrea, a little confusing, the way it's worded?
I think that I didn't read this. Someone read it.
Jodi and I struggle with this. It is, the law says it actually has, the board has to say...
Yes, and it says it here.
To vote yes, yeah.
Yes, it says it in the explanation also.
Right.
It's just sort of like, it just seems that a few things are left out there.
I know, I was going to say an affirmative vote, but then...
Ah, that sounds better.
It does, but that's not what the law says.
Oh, that's not, no, it does say yes.
We could say, and, and a...
And vote of yes to...
And a vote of yes.
Of yes?
Yeah, we could, sure. I'm sure they'll accept.
As long as we say yes.
Or say two vote yes. Or put the T-O in before vote, two vote yes. To approve and to vote.
And to vote, yeah, that's it. To vote yes. To allow, thank you.
All right.
That's good, that's grammar, just seeing Andrea made it down.
All right, so, and then, so that will be amended? Does that need to be an amendment, to change a word, add a word? All right, so, so I am going to put forth an amendment to the motion, which is to approve the healthy food certification statement for 2018-2019, and to vote yes to allow food exemptions. And that's been seconded by Rosemary.
Nicely worked.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, is that, and I go backwards, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to the motion, which is to approve the healthy food certification statement for 2018-2019, and to vote yes to allow food exemptions, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, amendment has carried. Now I go back. So, as amended. And so, am I done, or do we need to, no?
You have to do that.
Now you have, now you have to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, so now, now the vote is on the amended motion, which is to approve the healthy food certification statement for 2018-2019, and to vote yes to allow food exemptions. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
All you need is the vote.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion so carried. Got it. That was a lesson. All right. Okay, so what I am going to do, folks, for number...
Just one quick thing.
Yeah, so could we go to five and six and come back to four? So, number four...
Well, six is in executive session.
Oh, well, then I'm not going to go into executive session right now. All right, so we're just going to continue on. Let's see how we do. All right, so what I am going to do is I'm going to put a motion on the floor for an amount, just so that we can get it on the table, so that we can go into discussion. Okay, folks? All right, so, I am going to move to approve the fiscal year 19 budget in the amount of, woo, ready? Seventy-seven million, nine hundred and eighty-four, five, five, four. Can I get a sec, okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. That is based on the, on our object code front sheet that we were given today, which shows a 1.98 increase. That's how I got that number. I just wanted to make sure that people understood where I got that number. We are now going to go into discussion.
Ken has revised history of everything the board has done since January, but it's revised as of today.
So everyone should have the budget, should actually have two, click, section like this. It actually says 2% because it rounds up. It does have a chart. This, this actually can go in your books in the red section. This is up to date.
Great.
Then also, there should be a schedule like this with boxes on it, that just, this is the history that Dr. Grainer...
You want to walk us through the history?
Sure, so...
Oh, can we wait a couple of seconds?
Okay. So the history of the work sessions that we had so far. On the 8th of January, we met for the first time to discuss the budget. I did put in here the FY '18 final budget because the calculation for the increase depends on that. So that's in that first box. In the next budget work section, work session on the 16th, that's where we essentially started the process, where we started at a 4.13% increase, seventy-nine million, six hundred and thirty thousand. We met and we went through a number of different proposed reductions. I won't go through each one unless we want to, but the 23rd, the 29th, the 30th, February 5th, and then the last time we met, which was the 21st of February, we made the noted reductions, which brought us to a 1.98% increase over FY '18, which is approximately 1.516 million dollars. Thank you.
So, big picture, you started with a budget of 4.1% and whittled down through all of these various meetings, ultimately to tonight at 1.98. What you don't see on the proposal is anything to do with our health insurance reserve, which we last year used a part of the health insurance reserve, 347,000, if I'm not mistaken. Well, actually, this year, we used 347,000. And we did talk about it last time, but when we got back to the office Thursday after that Wednesday night meeting, both Ken and Laurie came to me and said they were not confident that they had enough information. So if you, if you go back to the, the health, the health insurance, this, this chart, if all goes well, like, exactly like last year, and we actually have some lesser claims, we're going to be okay. But frankly, it's a bit early to tell. We picked up, we actually doubled the number of high, right, high...
Yeah, the number of large, large claims, which is, those claims over $50,000, doubled in the number of them from December to January. That's somewhat concerning.
So my conservative bent is saying that if we got to the end of this year, and the, in that pink column, whatever color that is, if we needed more than 11.5 million dollars, that would have to come out of the health insurance reserve. So we didn't want to play Russian roulette or whatever with that number. Now, if we were talking in late April, we will then have the February numbers, and we will have the, probably the March numbers. If, if we had February and March, I think all of us would be a little more comfortable saying, we think there's going to be a certain amount of money left in our health insurance reserve. And if, you know, if we're lucky, there will be still 1.7 million dollars left in the reserve. If that were the case, then we could, the board could, in fact, pay for OPEB out of this year, all of OPEB. There, but there is a higher, there's actually an actuarial liability of like 1.2 million, which is the, that's the number that we started with, once upon a time. And we met with the town. I think the actuarial liability means it is, Laurie, maybe Ken, you could help me with this. It is the theoretical, based on the actuarial tables, we could have other post-employment benefit that could run to 1.2 million. It's probably more realistic that it's about 780, 786,000, the way we were talking. Either of those numbers would give us some leeway, but we don't know where we are exactly quite yet. And so neither of us, none of us felt comfortable saying that there's going to be a lot of money left over at the end of the year, so basically, don't worry. Laurie?
And I'd just like to share, per Ken's point earlier, the current OPEB requirements, they're paid at the start of the budget year. And previously, they had been funded, because they certainly weren't as high, it's been growing over time. They were funded through savings in the plan year. So when you look at the savings on this, any savings we get are to offset our OPEB costs for this year. So if we don't come in below the 11.5, we have some OPEB liability that might need to come out of the reserve. So that's why we're raising this issue before we tap into the reserve and then find out that maybe we don't have enough savings to cover that OPEB responsibility that we've already paid for this year, to Ken's point. That's why we're budgeting it separately going forward, so we can have a clearer picture on those expenses by carving it out separately.
Well, there's already, motion is on the floor. We're in discussion, we're in discussion.
I have a question. What we received in our packet, and what's not listed on here, about 212, the new proposed reductions that haven't been voted on yet, which is the object code 128, security and supervision recalculation, and the OOD tuition adjustment. It seems like we, once we vote for these on 2, I don't under, I'm kind of mixed up with what this has said with the 212, and then what you have here, on 212, no action on proposed reductions, because we had a weight, and then this is, you're listing all of them underneath here on the bottom for what, why we got down to 1.98? Is that it?
Rita, the security reductions, Ken combined, under personnel, it's the 133, 133.
Oh, okay, yeah. It was, it was clear to me in this sheet, that was in our packet.
Yeah, I was trying to consolidate and summarize.
I see. Because I think that's something we should, I mean, I can see your recalculation of personnel. It's not separated out. And so when we talked about getting down to 1.7, that would be... And so when we talked about getting down to 1.7, that would be if we went into the healthcare accounts, is that it?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Below, actually.
Below, yeah.
So that's still a possibility.
Oh, yeah.
I guess that was my, that was going to be my question, is, is that at what point do, sorry, Dr. Green, at what point did the two of you feel that you would have enough historic, historic? I have no idea what historic is. Not a clue. But I know what historical is. How much, how much would you have, how much, how many months do you have to have out for, for you guys to feel comfortable that we could go into our healthcare reserve?
Well, for a guarantee, I'd want 12 months, but a couple more months.
If you're a little gambling.
A couple more months would give us a better indication of where we think we're going to end up versus right now. I mean, the trend right now, unfortunately, is higher. Not that it wasn't anticipated, because it was, but we don't know exactly, you know, what that's going to look like going forward. Is it going to continue to go up or level off?
So do you think May, we would have the information that you would need?
Yeah, I think we'd be in a much better spot to be able to make those, make a better prediction.
Right.
Lori?
I would just share that, you know, the spring, historically, the higher trend months, too, and we haven't gotten to those yet, so, you know, a few more months under our belt would certainly make a big difference.
Okay, this sounds like a really.
Looks like August, according to the chart we received. July and August seem like big months.
So we could, if we, if we find that we fare better, is it that, is it that we could pay some of our OPEB, which is our, after employment?
Other, other, other post-employment benefits.
The real, the real question is, if we don't have, if 11, that pink column there, if 11.49 is not enough, we don't have any other money, we have to go to the health insurance reserve. So if, if we're good, and we don't have to touch because of lower claims, or if the claims actually come in at the expected amount, and then in the past, they used to pay for the OPEB out of that, but, you know, as we said, the OPEB this year was 9/11, so it's a big number. But if, if we get to the end of the year and we need more than 11.5 million dollars, we're going to have to go to the health insurance reserve. So we didn't want to say, well, let's take the health insurance reserve now, then get to the end of the year and say, we're going to need to tap the health insurance reserve. We'd like to get closer, which will give us a pretty good sense of where we're going to be. So these, these greater than $50,000 claims, they could level off. You know, it's, unfortunately, it was a bad, bad month. Those claims could, could level off. As you, if you look at, if you look at the 1, 2, 3, the fourth, fourth column over from, from the right, you'll, you'll see that we were, cost versus the board of head. So, sorry, the third column over. So we were 178 under, so we, you know, we were saving money there, at least vis a vis the budget. But then we, then August shot up, we were 225 over, and then 227 under, 342 under, 179 under, 171 under. So those were good trends, that was all contributing to that 873 at the bottom of that column. But January went to 104. If the next month, it could easily calm down. Actually, it did do that last year. And last year, the next month calmed down, too. We were, the number, the bottom, in the gray box there, 88.5. Last year, we were pretty close to that. I think we were at 85, if I'm not mistaken. So if, if that trend continues, we're in pretty good shape. If the trend takes off without us, we're in trouble. Well, we're not in trouble, but we certainly, we don't want to jeopardize our.
Health reserve account.
Our health reserve.
Jay?
So, just to add to the good news, the actuarial determined contribution that we originally had was the 1.12 million. So the problem is that both the town and the board are negative on our, with regard to OPEB, the other post-employment.
Benefits.
Benefits. So we have an unfunded liability. So should we consider going with the higher number, given that our net assets right now are actually negative in that OPEB account?
When you say the number, what number are you talking about?
I'm trying to follow.
Well, we're budgeting for 786, 960, but the actuary originally suggested that we budget for 1.12 million. I mean, if we had a lot in, in the account, you know, should we, should we be budgeting more to make sure we're covering that liability?
Right, it's good. Do you have a take on this, Lori?
Yeah, I mean, Jay's correct. I mean, there was an original projection that was higher because of the fact that the OPEB on the board's side is running basically with, without assets. We're basically paying, paying the claims each year. The town, although their OPEB reserve is quite high, so they do have some money there on the town side. So what we're going to look at is ways and opportunities going forward that we can look at those other post-employment obligations, to see what we can do with help with costs in those areas. It doesn't provide immediate relief, but we're hoping that over time, over the next few years, we can do some work on those programs, to see if there's a way we can start to rebuild some of that reserve on the OPEB. Because there's a, there's a reserve for the health insurance, and then there's a separate reserve for, for OPEB.
So the theme here is that all of our budget increase this year, at the beginning, was driven by fixed costs, increases in salary, benefits, retirement. We only have 3.8% of our budget is discretionary.
Okay.
And yet, all of these things went up over 2.5 million. So what we've spent the last couple of months doing in all of these special meetings is hacking away here and there.
Yeah, you're right.
And we've hacked it down to this 1.98 in an attempt to, to not affect the students, you know, finding every opportunity we can. But we're, we're on a very slippery slope because our projected number of students is now up, 122.
It's not projected, it's actual.
Oh, the actual is up. They're building new apartments in town. And so we, you know, just at this 1.98, it's very precarious. And so that's, that's what we've done, just to basically cover, I mean, we closed a school last year just to cover benefits and salary increases, and we don't have another school to close this year. So, and so I know we all know this, but in addition to that, because our OPEB assets are actually negative, as painful as it is, should we consider adding to what the actuary called for? Otherwise, we're just kind of kicking that pension thing down the road, which is what we've done at the state level.
What would that cost us?
The difference between the actuarial calculated number and the expected benefit payout is 333,193. If we added that to our number, that would turn out to be a 2.42% increase.
So I, I think when we go to the town council and the RTM, they need to know that this is the minimum for us to also be, to also be responsible for these retirement benefits.
Our financial obligations.
Right. We can't keep kicking it down the, the road.
Are you, are you, are you on the, are you suggesting, I'm sorry, speaking is just not going to happen tonight, are you suggesting that, that is something that we should, that we should look at tonight, is to add that 3?
333.
That number?
Yeah, I mean.
What would be the new number?
The new total?
Dollar.
Total, 78?
No, no, sorry, the increase. Which is $200,000 less than our health insurance increase. So the whole budget goes up zero, and we come in at 200,000 less than what we need for our benefits. Right? Because the benefits, you need 2,9563.
Well, of course, that's what you'd be adding to 333, so.
Oh, right, that's true.
But what?
For benefits number?
Well, actually, it works even more so than Ken. I need 2.3 million, and my budget is only going up 1.8, right? Makes sense?
That's correct.
If we add, if we add $333,000 to line 11, then line 58 becomes 1,800 something. So the 2.3 is what we need to be responsible for health insurance under this scenario, and the whole budget is going up $500,000 less than that. That's to say, we've cut the budget by $500,000. What was the number, 333, 493?
333, 193.
193.
Lee?
I think we all thought about this since last Wednesday, I know that I have. And I, I have also been very carefully looking at what other towns are doing as far as their board of education expenditures are. And I, I think that we're better off trying to pay what we owe. And, you know, the state of Connecticut, they're not real good mentors when it comes to paying their debts. And I don't think we should do it either. I think we should go at, what is it, 2.4? I really do think we should, so I'm with Jay on that.
What's, what's the liability on, on OPEB that the board theoretically would have in the kitty? It's a negative number, isn't it?
Oh, it's negative, we're in the hole, 668,519. I don't want to tell you what the board and the town have in terms of total unfunded accrued liability. It's.
Significant.
It's extremely significant, because it's been kicked down the road all this time. Now, don't get me wrong, Groton, actually, I'm told, is doing better than most towns in the state in terms of the actuarial value of their assets. We're all, all in the same boat, but we're all underfunding.
Right.
Lori?
Yeah, Jay, you're, you're correct. The unfunded liability was a multi-year, decade worth program when they put OPEB liability in place.
We have to have a timeout, please?
Sure.
To a tour.
All right, we are going to, we are going to resume our conversation, and so let's recap, because we had like two minutes, so maybe we have all forgotten. So there was a conversation that we had, which was in, in support of adding three, once again, we're still in discussion. 333, 193, which would.
Fully fund.
Fully fund our OPEB.
Liability.
Liability, which is, stands, yes, Rosemary?
How does that change our percentage?
It moves it to.
2.42.
2.42. So this is, Gretchen?
If we're looking at the grand list, we only have 122 extra students at the moment. So if we look at the grand list and we have a bunch more people, that will spread out the tax burden of whatever we make the decision. Do we know where we are on the grand list?
Yes. It's down.
It's down, but we still have 122 extra students.
Yeah, well, the grand list is based on the.
Business.
Yeah, taxable property in town, and it is down again.
Have we talked to John Reiner? Reiner, Reiner, the young man?
Yeah, no, well, yes, I've spoken to him many times, but Jay's right, the grand list is down, but partly because the town has been losing, partly because of the Pfizer thing and.
An EV moving. EVs building buildings and building up, so possibly, it's not as, like, we're spreading it out a little bit more, I think, over the next year or two. I don't think this is going to be as hard on the individual as it has been in the past.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things, if the boards chose to do this, and we give ourselves, like we were saying, until at least when we meet with town council, presumably in later April, the board would be in a position to say, well, look, we looked at our, our projections, and it would appear we could responsibly cover that liability, and then some, and the budget could be reduced by $300,000, which would bring it below. No, but I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be better experience, and it's probably a bad thing to assume. We would rather see where we actually are. But I think funding the liability, you know, I'm, I'm very sensitive to that, and as, as Lee said, that's the problem, is we live in a state where they don't fund pension liabilities, and it's irresponsible, besides being fiscally just, just really, doesn't make any sense, crazy, yeah, it's a clinical term.
So my question is, Gretchen, if I could just speak, and then I will recognize you, is, is what happens if, if we go a couple of months down and we realize that we have some monies to pay? Could we not use that to balance off, or add that 300, that 303,1? I mean, or is, or is that, does that feel not responsible? And present it as a 1 point, whatever, whatever percentage our, our raise is, and that we could actually, in a, in a couple of months, possibly meet that?
Well, I.
Fully fund.
I'll answer your question. If, because there's no, there's no projected OPEB savings in this thing. So we're saying we're going to, we're going to spend 786,000. If, if we're wrong, well, I mean, not that we're wrong, but we might have to tap into the reserve for that. And so if you remember, last time we met, we said, well, let's cut 780, which brought us, would bring us down below. That was the 0.98, if I remember correctly. But Ken and Lori are saying that's, it's too early to do that, that's irresponsible. If we, if we stick with 1.98, then we, we are prepared to tap into the health insurance reserve for about $800,000, which would bring the reserve down to 900,000. If the, if the trend is pretty bad, then we, we would have to dip into the 900,000 that's left, lower and lower, you know, so it gets to that point. If, if you went with the 2.4%, it is conceivable that we would be able to announce that, my thought would be, we would announce it to the town council and say, it would appear that we could cover OPEB. And so if you cut the budget, you, the town council, cut the budget by 780,000, that would be absorbed, it would bring us down to essentially 1.98. Or even lower, actually, if, if we could, well, because if we're going up 3, then 79, that would actually bring us down from where we are, from the discussion right now, about 400,000 less.
I think I understood half of what you were saying. So I, so I apologize about that.
Well, one way is to be super conservative, which is probably when you, when you don't, when you're talking about unknown liabilities, it's probably good to be super conservative. This is, correct me if you think I'm wrong, I think this is middle-of-the-road conservative. It is not. It is not super conservative. We were leaning towards super hopeful. Last meeting and, and both Lori and Ken came to me and said, I, I can't go along with this. That, that's too risky, maybe that's the way. The, putting more money in is, 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 I'll simply say, it's, it's very conservative. What we have here is middle-of-the-road, the other way is too risky. So, I don't know where we, I don't know where we go.
Gretchen, and I, I, actually, I'm going to recognize Katrina and then Gretchen.
What is the unfunded amount in the OPEB? Can you, someone repeat that?
The amount, the actual amount?
The actual unfunded amount.
Unfunded liability for the board?
Yeah.
Thirteen million, two thirty four.
One, three, four, three.
I'm sorry, can I?
Thirteen, three, three, four, three, five, four.
Okay, and then three hundred and thirty-three is to partially fund? I think I lost.
It would be to fund the projected, the thirteen million, correct me if I'm wrong. The thirteen million is every single one of every person that we have in the whole district that's retired, gets sick on the same day, and we have to pay thirteen million dollars, right? That, that's the.
Okay, all right, what's the, the?
The reasonable projection for one year is one point one million.
That's what I wanted to know.
That's reasonable, that's the.
Okay, and then what, what was the, um, seven hundred and something?
That's what, that's what the town finance director told us. She predicts, she projects the actual claims will be, so we're gonna pay our claims.
So, that's what they've, they would, if, if they were, if they hadn't billed us and made us aware of this OPEB issue, that's how much they would have taken?
Precisely.
Okay.
That's, that's how much they're projecting they would take. We won't get the real bill until August.
Okay. What is our cumulative health reserve balance?
One, one point seven.
Okay, what is our, what was our health reserve balance June thirtieth, twenty seventeen?
That's the one point.
One point seven.
Okay, and so, what is it from then to now?
Well.
What's the cumulative amount?
Technically, because we haven't paid all the claims yet, there, there, there's money in there. But if the claims go as expected, if a hundred percent of the claims, so if, if it came to eleven point four nine million dollars, we wouldn't touch the one point seven. Right? Except we would have to pay OPEB. Except for OPEB. So, if we have to pay OPEB, which is seven, seven eighty-six, then our, our, our balance would go down to about a million.
Okay.
Right?
Which is what we talked about last week. Which is why I'm confused, why we're not doing that. Because it was, because they said it was way too risky, because the, the, let me make sure that I got this right. Is that what has, they don't have enough information? Yeah. And they're, and they're concerned that if we, if we take more out of that, we are not gonna have an, we're gonna shoot ourselves in the foot again about dipping too far into our, our health, our health reserve. Okay, and this is where I'm confused. We have a health reserve account that had a balance on June thirtieth that it, and all of the claims, ninety-nine point nine percent of those claims are gone, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, from last year, you're right.
So, that's the amount I'm talking about.
Okay, let me, let me try it this way. On June thirtieth, we had one point seven million dollars.
Yeah.
If we have predicted perfectly, there'll be one point seven million dollars, but we still have to pay OPEB. But what Ken and Lori are concerned with, we don't think the claims, because they went so high this past month, we don't think there's going to be one point seven million left at, at the end of the year. We're afraid there's only going to be, say, one million left. And then we have to pay OPEB, which is seven eighty-six. Now, we go down to only three hundred thousand in our reserves. Does that make sense? If, if we knew at the end of the year, which we'll tell you in April, I think, a better guess in April, that we actually, we're, we're good, we're only gonna spend the eleven, eleven point four nine million, then we would say, look, we have one point seven million in the bank, we'll pay our OPEB, we still have a million and everybody's happy. But if we, if those claims come in more than eleven point four nine, we're in trouble. Because we have to pay the extra claims and OPEB.
Yeah.
That's, that's our, that, that was our Thursday morning sober conversation.
And what was the amount that's been added to the account since June thirtieth, twenty seventeen?
Well, there wouldn't be anything added.
They, they don't calculate it, except on June thirty.
Right.
What is the, okay, and, thank you. Gretchen?
Fully fund it this year and then come into next year and there's leftovers. We use leftovers plus whatever, but at least we've done, like, with our health savings account. I, I can only do this in micro because I can't think of numbers this big. So, we have been, the left, both put us on a health savings account system. So, we get X amount of money every month that goes into this card. If we started it when we were twenty, we'd have lots of money in there.
Right.
But because we're older, we have more health bills, we struggle to keep money in that account.
Right.
If we fully fund it now, will we be saving money in the long run?
Well, I don't think we would be saving money, but we would be responsible because.
I think responsible is really important.
No, no, yeah, we, we, we agree that we, if, if we have a crystal ball and it turns out that we, that eleven point five million dollars will be our claims this year, we're good. And then we're gonna pay our OPEB, we're still gonna have a million bucks in, in the bank. If, if on the other hand, these claims start to take off and it's more than eleven million, four ninety-nine, then we're in trouble.
I, I really beg for being responsible.
Lee?
And I just want, I just want to add to that, that for two things. Number one, we self-insure, that's number one. Number two, we, it's not a matter of responsibility, it's a matter of law. We have to take care of the people who work for us, we have to. If, if we had twenty-three heart attacks and a few aneurysms, we have to pay. And if we can't do it, the town has to.
So, it has to get done either way.
So, I, I, that's why I'd like to stay responsible.
I'd like to.
Because it, it rolls down the hill.
Rosemary with Lee.
I think we've all understood the folly of kicking it down the road and not funding things that we should have funded for years. And we have paid a price for that with having to close a school to catch up and because of the. So, maybe let's stop doing that, because the definition of insanity is to continue to do the same crazy behavior and expect a different outcome. And it's bananas, which is crazy with the peel.
Okay, so, um, so right now, what, what's on the floor that we're discussing is the one point nine eight percent increase, which is the seventy-seven, nine, eight, four, five, five, four.
So, we should have a vote on that number?
Well, unless someone wants to propose another number.
Don't you first have to vote on the first number before you get to another number? No, you can have different numbers?
I think you have to vote on the latest one that was put on the table.
Let's go with that.
I think. So, the last motion that the board could vote on would, would be the one point nine eight percent. But if somebody wanted to make a, a motion to add three, 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 one, nine, three to, to, to cover the actuarial liability, then that number would be on the table.
Um, I'm gonna do Jay, Rosemary, and Lee. Gretchen, I'll get you after Lee.
I move that we approve the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget in the amount of, and Ken, check me on this.
Yep.
Seventy-eight million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Which is what percentage?
Two, four. Two point four.
And what that does is, from my understanding, it's what the actuary says is the expected benefit plus they're determined, what they've determined to be are suggested contributions, so we start catching up on this unfunded. Because our assets now are actually, this, this amount would, would wipe out half the deficit in our assets this year and move us toward at least.
Yeah.
Starting to save for the future.
Second.
So, that's been seconded by Lee. Discussion on that?
Yeah, the problem is, we don't have any more room on the bottom of our history page. We're gonna have to squeeze it in really small tomorrow.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the fiscal number of, I'm gonna, can I?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight million, three hundred and seventeen, seven, four, seven.
What's? Thank you.
Or two point four two percent increase.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Abstain? No, Rita and I both.
No, I voted no.
No, I mean, no, we both. Rita and I both voted no.
Yeah, I'm definitely voting no.
Okay, so?
All right, but the motion has carried. So, do we go back to the first motion? No, because that was amended?
No, that's it.
That's it? All right, so we move on. Lost the sheet. All right, so I am actually going to ask that the, we haven't had the committee of the whole um, meeting about how we're gonna handle the, the committee meetings. And so, I don't want this to be, I don't want us to vote on it when we haven't had the full conversation about that. So, I'm asking for number five to, to be tabled for the following regular board meeting when, after we've had a conversation at a committee of the whole meeting.
So, move.
All righty. And then, um, we do have an executive session, but I'm wondering if what we can do is that we can just go to the other parts of the, of the agenda so that people can leave and, and we can do our business. So, um, letters and communication, Jay, do you have any?
Let's see, I just received, um, an email from a parent who was concerned about some functionality of Power School, but I understand that IT is working on that and is open to a ticket. They were also asking about the status of the website, but I understand that that's in, in progress.
Okay, Rosemary?
Um, is this where we put in what meetings and things we've attended?
Sure.
Okay, um, I, since the last meeting, I've attended a GASS meeting, although I missed the one today. And I have also, will be attending a meeting on sensible gun legislation tomorrow.
Okay, great, Lee?
I went to see the play, The Boy in the Stripe Pajamas, which was wonderful, difficult and wonderful. And I also love the Northeast Arts Festival. I didn't make one day, but I made the other two, and it was just wonderful.
Great job. Thank you again.
Rita. Also, the Northeast Academy Arts Festival was phenomenal. And I also, we, we received, the board received about the, the art show, I mean, the photo. Students have been working on the, um, the exhibit that is going to be at Mystic Seaport in conjunction with, with the Williams School, and that'll be March first through March thirty-first. And it's the second annual student show. And I went last year and it was wonderful, and I just want to bring people's attention to it again this year. So, I hope you could stop in and see it at the Seaport.
Katrina?
Oh, um, I was not able to attend, attend anything extracurricular. And I've gotten the same emails that have been shared with other people, maybe a couple.
Okay. Gretchen?
I've had some contact with a couple of Northeast teachers, and they are feeling that they cannot complain publicly or they'll be, I don't know, flogged, whatever. They feel that a lot of the kids coming in on the magnet program are coming in with issues that they don't have the time to deal with because of everything else. Cecil Field, that the magnet stuff is, adds way too much to the day. They're very uncomfortable, especially in the lower grades, first, second area. They're, they're just really stretched thin and they're very unhappy. And I'm not gonna say who said what, because I promised I wouldn't. But there are some very unhappy teachers that are feeling pushed. There have been incidents where students, I, I, I'm guessing they're magnet children, have hit or pushed or spit on teachers or aides, and they're not, they're, they're really uncomfortable with this and they don't know how to broach it with the general public or us.
All right, thank you, I'll make a note of it and I'll talk to Dr. Briney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Wow, that's a buzzkill.
Sorry, I'm really, I'm so sorry, but I knew I had to say it, it's at a point. I meant, wanted to say.
Okay, it's fine, Jay?
I just know that in, in teaching kids these days, there's so much more that we all teach.
Yeah.
And, you know, it goes way beyond the books and the, and it's okay, it's not linear with kids. There are ups and downs and problems to solve, and that's life.
I understand that.
That's life, I mean, I'm sorry.
So, do you have any?
I do.
Okay.
I just have to rave about Northeast Academy. I, um, I continue to hear, and my daughter-in-law doesn't teach in that building. She's equally happy where she is in, in another school in town. But, um, I, I'm still thinking about the arts festival. The kids are eager to go back in the evening, like, Mom and Dad, let's, you know, we have to go back to school tonight. And for me, it was Grandma, are you going? I said, Maggie, I'm going, if you're going. She said, yeah, I'm going, pick me up, please. You know, the, the kids are so excited. That, that auditorium was chock full. I'm standing alone.
Amazing.
And what I appreciated, the multi-age, um, groups. There were high school kids who came from Griswold to perform that night. Um, the, the elderly gentlemen, I wouldn't know any of them, uh, much.
Rock pages is.
The, um, the big band. You know, they're all professional musicians at one point or another in their lives, they're totally dedicated. And the kids, I was watching the kids, young kids were just spellbound. Wow, look at these, I think I want to play, you know.
And they're one of their.
Just wonderful.
One of their music teachers is part of it.
That's the PR, yes, and the teachers were there enthusiastically loving it. They're so proud to be in that building. But I'm finding the same thing in listening to my daughter-in-law, I talk about the challenges that they have, yes, the great things they're doing, and they, they take pride in the school buildings. You know, she said, Jane, we want to go out and buy paint, paint some of those walls. They, they take real pride wherever they are. So, I'm just seeing very positive things.
Thank you, Jane.
I went to the permanent building committee and I know more about furnaces and heat systems than I ever want to know anymore. And I also got a, I, I don't know what to do with this, so I'm gonna send it to you. I got an email from someone who didn't get a yearbook from nineteen eighty-seven, something like that. I had no idea where to send that, so I'm sending it to you.
All right.
All right. Good luck finding a new one.
Um, I do have something to add. I've set up with my gym a, to enhance the bottle recycling for Charles Barnum. And met with Seth.
Tanner.
And he will be inviting the owner of my gym. So, we're expanding the fundraising, you know, for this, for the trip, so.
Awesome.
It's official, and he cleared it with his corporation and, and it's a go.
Thank you, Rosemary, thank you for spearheading, that's been so cool. Jay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the first time around, I forgot. I was at the GASS meeting today and the question came up about advertising, whether Channel nineteen could run their promos or we, do we have, because it's nonprofit and that sort of thing. And could we spotlight?
I, I'm getting an affirmative response from our videographer.
Okay, all right, so.
If it's a nonprofit, yeah. Yeah, we could do GASS, I mean, we're part of GASS.
Right.
Certainly, we could do that.
Carolyn's got some videos she can send over and then we thought about whether we could spotlight some of the community organizations on the front of our webpage, sort of rotate them through.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Um, occasionally, and so that was a, a very productive meeting.
Good.
And I also have to say, the, yeah, Celebration of the Arts in Northeast. And I also have to say, the, yeah, celebration of the arts at Northeast was spectacular. And the name of the band, which included a certain Bruno Giuliani, was As Time Goes By.
As Time Goes By, that's it, yes, and My Neighbor and...
And Your Neighbor, yes.
And the instrument, Bob, who teaches at Northeast Academy, the instruments.
No kidding?
Yes, he's in.
He's in it too.
Is that Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
So I just, I also have some communications, so I've had multiple emails regarding transportation and bus stops, and I have referred off to people that I need to. I've had some, I shared with you the email that I received from Mike Whitney from the RTM and the land use. And also, I was able to, I was there for another meeting, but I ended up hanging out for about an hour with the teachers' college, was at Mary Morrison this past week, and got to watch some teachers do their thing, and I thought that was very cool. And I also, I think we all got, were asked to for Read Across America, which is on Friday, and I will be at one or two of the schools in the afternoon.
The weather will be just fine.
The weather will be just fine. So I just want to move us down to, because we still have, we need to go into executive session, but that, the dates are gonna stay as is until we have sort of moved forward with our committee stuff. It just, we have been chock full busy, and so just to kind of let that know. And I think that we'll be having some more meeting dates with town bodies as the budget, as the budget continues in terms of budget hearings and stuff, so I know that we'll be hearing more.
Starting in April.
But that would be starting in April. Okay. So at this point, I'll take a motion that the town council will go into executive session, and I...
The board of ed.
Does the town council? No, because that's you. I'm gonna, we're gonna have the board of ed go into executive session, and we are in here, if we can get the room to be cleared quickly, and I will, I'm asking to invite Dr. Grenier, any...
That's all, that's all.
And Dr. Grenier into our executive session. All right, Sue, do you wanna be in the assistant...
No, she doesn't.
Okay, go on.
As much as she'd like to be part of it, it's just a quick thing. At the other day, I just wanted to acknowledge, Mr. Knight has been a school business manager for how long? Since five months. So not coming from a school district, I think it's pretty remarkable that Mr. Knight has been able to do all this phenomenal work, really, really amazing.
All those in favor, please say aye.
All those in favor of going into executive session? Aye.
All right, we're gone.
Thank you, Joan.
All right, let's go.
Thank you, Joan.